Thank you. Last month, we recognized our state champion Bethel Park High School cheerleaders, and this month, it is our pleasure to recognize a Whipple champion and state runner-up. With us this evening is Bethel Park High School senior wrestler, Nino Bonacorsi. Nino is the most decorated wrestler in Bethel Park history, having won three consecutive section championships and becoming Bethel Park's first two-time Whipple championship wrestler. As a Whipple individual champion, Nino represented the Whipple at state wrestling championships, where he finished in second place for the second consecutive year, and while that was not his intended goal, he can still hold his head high and be proud of the fact that he is also Bethel Park's first two-time state wrestling finalist. During his senior year, Nino won at the prestigious National Power Aid Tournament, the Allegheny County Tournament, the King of the Mountain Tournament, the Gateway Invitational, and the Chertiers Valley Duels. Outside of the state finals, Nino won every match in his senior year. To top off a great high school wrestling career, Nino was selected as a member of the Pennsylvania All-Star Team at this year's Pittsburgh Wrestling Classic, where he defeated a four-time West Virginia state champion on Saturday night. And Vicki enjoyed putting that in there because I'm from West Virginia, so she wanted to kind of wrap that up. Next year, he will take his wrestling talents to the collegiate level, where he will follow in the footsteps of his father Mark and his brother Nick, and wrestle for the University of Pittsburgh. Nino, in recognition of your great wrestling career, and specifically, the great season you had in your senior year, it is the board's pleasure to also present you with a certificate of recognition to commemorate you being a 2017 state finalist, as well as Whipple and section champion. We are so very proud of your accomplishments, and we wish you well as you prepare for your collegiate wrestling career at Pitt. I would ask the audience to join me in a round of applause for Nino.
Thank you. Very appreciate it.
Sandy, Andrea, and lots of other two at Pitt.
Yep.
Anything you'd like to say? You're welcome to say.
Oh, you were gonna take the picture. That's right, Vicki said.
The many rules that I play, I try. Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great job.
Donna, can I say something?
Sure.
I just wish you had your Pitt shirt on while that picture was being taken.
It's all right. I support Pitt. My son went to Pitt. They have lots of my money down there. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the Honorable Ronald Arnony, our district judge. Judge Arnony is with us this evening to provide our community with a brief overview of some of the issues and initiatives that are happening with this office, and once you pick those up, the podium is yours.
Thank you.
Glad I didn't do that.
Thank you so much. The podium's not big enough.
You have too much stock.
Good evening, you guys. How are you?
Good.
Good to see you all, distinguished members of the school board, Mr. Superintendent, Madam President, administrators, residents. Welcome all, and thank you for having me this evening. I just wanted to give you a little rundown of the state of the court, if you will. I'd also like to add that I continue to have an excellent working relationship with the school district, the administrators, Officer Modrak, and a lot of the new initiatives that have been taking place with truancy and other matters, we've been working jointly on. And I would like to say I'm very proud that the school board, the district, and the administrators do a really, really good job and stay up on all the new legislation and mandates, as well as the professionalism that they display in the courts, and I just want you to convey that as well. As I did state, I'd like to give you a little rundown of the state of the courts, and one of the things I wanted to tell you a little bit about is that the Pennsylvania courts collected more than $462 million in fees, fines, costs, and restitution in 2016, including a record $103 million paid online. Pay e-pay allows people conveniently to make payments via the internet with debit card or credit card. Online payments are up 12% this year, and over the past 10 years, the courts have collected nearly $4.6 billion. These dollars, for the most part, do not flow back to the judiciary. Most of the money collected by the courts is sent to state, local, and governments, as well as victims of crime. A small portion of the money also is used in various entities, such as the airports, parking authorities, and libraries. Locally, the district court did collect over a half a million dollars, our district court, which represents Bethel Park and Upper St. Clair. And since I dropped my stuff, I'm kind of all mixed up here, but I can tell you that our caseload this year is up 27.5%. The criminal indictable cases are up 27.5%. And many of you may think, "Well, why is that?" Well, it's a lot of different reasons, including the attrition of the police departments, that is, they're getting a little younger and they're a little more active. Of course, it also does mean that some crime is up, but with that being said, I can tell you that we have two wonderful police departments in Bethel Park and Upper St. Clair who continue to do an excellent job in enforcing the laws of the Commonwealth and included in this district, and I commend them for that. Unfortunately, crime and traffic tickets and alike are part of human nature and things we have to deal with. People do make mistakes. As I tell the kids and others, it's how you rebound from the mistakes that make you who you are and build the character in those kids. We unfortunately do have some of your students come our way occasionally, and we certainly do set them straight. I've talked to the superintendent a number of times, and he's really an easy guy to talk to, and we have a very good professional relationship, and we have built a lot of inroads as it relates to presentations in the district and to the administrators, and I'd certainly like that to continue. We do drug and alcohol awareness programs, and bullying, and other programs such as dealing with the internet and social media issues that's very prevalent. Currently, I am working on a program, a diversionary program with a curriculum specifically for kids the ages of probably about 13 to 17, that will deal with disciplinary issues, focus, organization, and touch on social media as well. And I think it's just due time, and I'm hoping I've been working with court administration and making our court a pilot project for that. So that's something else I did want to pass along. You guys have been staying up on the truancy laws and issues. I've been working with, again, Officer Modrak and others to continue that endeavor. It's very important to have our kids in school, and Bethel Park does a very good job of that. So I'd like to commend you there, too. Other than that, I just wanted to open it up to any questions any of the board members might have, and I also want to, again, on behalf of myself, thank each and every one of you for your service to our community in this district. Again, I'm a very proud member of Bethel Park. My daughter goes to this school now, and we have an excellent district area and program, and it's because of you and the work that you guys have put in over these many years that make it the greatness that it is. So thank you. Do any of you have any questions while I'm here? Mr. Means, go figure. And you got your lights turned off, right?
Yes, I did. Judge Arnony, what's going on with the opioid epidemic that's raging across southwest Pennsylvania right now?
It's a very, very poignant and good question. Mr. Means, it is an epidemic, and unfortunately, the drug is winning the battle. When you have over 500 deaths due to overdose in Allegheny County alone, and the surrounding colonies are in the hundreds as well, when you consider that Pennsylvania is one of the major states unfortunately for the opiate epidemic that we're facing right now, one of the things so often people ask me, "Do we have a drug problem in this district?" And the unfortunate short answer is yes, but we have a drug problem all across western Pennsylvania and all across the United States. When you consider that the world's population, the United States, based on the percentages, is about 4.3% of the world's population, yet we consume 98% of the world's hydrocodone. So one thinks, "Do we have a drug problem?" Of course we do. There's so many different fronts to that drug problem, including the medical community, Big Pharma, and just the street drug that it ultimately ends up turning into. I'm working very hard to try to continue bringing about awareness to the problem. I think that is definitely on the forefront. There are things like Vivitrol, which is an opiate blocker, an injection that's given once a month to users. The mental health aspect of this and self-medication is a big issue that we continue to concentrate on. There is a push among many to attempt to decriminalize the issue and make it more of a mental health issue and more of a component of the drug being the punishing factor to an individual, but it's a double-edged sword. I continue to fight the battle right on the front lines and work with the DA's office, the US Attorney's Office, and many others to try to combat this very serious problem that we've been dealing with for a long time. But, Mr. Means, you're 100% correct. It is an issue, and it is a problem that I've taken the battle on and tried to carry the ball as forcefully as I can through all measures, and many people are working on this. It's unfortunate when I have people before me that I try to help out and find that they've OD'd or visiting their family and them in the funeral home, and that's very difficult for me. So I continue to work very aggressively on the opiate problem that exists.
Is there anything we can do as a school district to assist you?
Yes, continue to allow me in here to run programs and bring other professionals in to bring about awareness to the children of this district and the community at large. That would probably be one of the biggest helps. I know some of the other districts have a week where they dedicate to drug and alcohol awareness, and I think that that might be something that Bethel Park might want to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Arnony?
Yes.
As far as you know, is there any truth to like a rumor I have heard that the drug dealers are now mixing the Vivitrol?
Vivitrol.
Vivitrol in with the opiates that they're selling?
Sadly enough, yes. And again, it's just a continued fight. You have the Narcan now, which has saved a lot of lives. The police officers, medics, and others carry that with them. It does bring somebody back essentially from death, but yeah, there is, like anything else with the media world and computers that you know so well, where there's a virus or a bug, somebody comes up with a solution, and then somebody else, a criminal, comes up with something to counter that, and it's the same fight that we're dealing with with this. So there is a new form of a medication that's injected into one's vein, and over time, it's a time-release medication, and it helps them get off the...
The cravings.
Yeah, it's the cravings, yeah. Thanks, Dave. Anything else?
Judge, I have a question for you. Thank you for coming tonight, by the way.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Several years ago, you had run a program on psychobullying. Any opportunities to revisit that or have another program? I thought it was a really good opportunity for the parents to learn a lot about what they don't know.
Absolutely. You tell me when and where, and I'll be there. Anything else? Thank you so much, everybody. Have a pleasant evening and keep up the great work that you do.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes. Under personnel, Mrs. Cook, we have one under number seven. Number seven will be changed to read as follows. Approval of the temporary special education paraprofessional position. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to open one temporary, part-time, special education paraprofessional position at Neil Armstrong Middle School for 29.5 hours per week, beginning April 7, 2017.
Thank you. Any others? I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 28, 2017.
No move.
Can you sign off with a note?
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero. I need to announce executive session held March 21, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and March 28, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report. Ms. Wells?
Hi. I am pleased to be able to share my first good news report with you this evening. Bethel Park High School DECA students competed against more than 2,200 high school students at the DECA State Career Development Conference in Hershey. This year, 37 finalists and six students earned medallion awards. 31 students are now qualified to compete at the DECA International Career Development Conference in April in Anaheim, California. Congratulations to all of our finalists and good luck at Nationals. All of the winners' names are on the screen, but we would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge our first-place winners. Noah Bessard, Carolyn Cook, Chandler Dietz, Marissa Christensen, Max Heller, Paige Davidson, Valerie Wingren, Samantha Dunn, Alyssa George, Tammy Stugan, Sabrina Tadetelis. Bethel Park High School German students once again dominated the competition at the AATG German Day Competition at Washington and Jefferson College, bringing home three first-place, two second-place, and two third-place awards, the most of any of the 12 competing schools. Congratulations to Aaron Hallt, sorry, Evan, Brendan Troesch, Brandon Janis, Daniel Guthral, and Jen Clara for a great competition. Four Bethel Park High School students received the Extra Effort Award for the third quarter of the 2016-2017 school year from the Steele Center for Career and Technical Education. Congratulations to Melanie O'Brien, Marcus Miller, Stephanie Fiderowsky, and Ashley Appelgarth. These students were selected based on their outstanding attitude, work ethic, attendance, and dependability. Bethel Park High School junior Cassandra Biancannelli was one of the 13 area students who were inducted into the National Technical Honor Society at the Steele Center for Career and Technical Education. Cassandra is a student in the Cosmetology Program at Steele Center. Congratulations, Cassandra. Eight Bethel Park High School students participated in the Influence to Youth Action Sessions at the Disability Summit sponsored by State Representative Dan Miller. The event provided the students with the opportunity to meet students from other school districts, participate in self-advocacy activities, learn how to network with potential employers at the Employment and Transition Fair, and interact with elected officials at a legislative panel presentation. Representing Bethel Park in this event were Duncan Warner, Brennan Carosa, Andrew Dixon, Jessica Green, Cheyelle Jones, Luke Snyder, Giovanni Bernardi, and Nolan Rosemeyer. The students had a great time participating in this program and appreciated the network opportunities. A group of Bethel Park High School ceramic students put their talents to good use crafting soup bowls, which were donated to the annual Empty Bowls Dinner, which raises awareness and funds for the hungry in the Pittsburgh area. This event, which is held at the Rodolph Shalom Temple in Oakland, benefits Just Harvest and the Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank. Attendees at the event enjoy soup and bread from local restaurants, and after they eat, they can select and take home one of the many soup bowls made by local artists, including our talented high school plotters. Bethel Park High School senior Carolyn Cook did a great job representing her school at the Shazda Student Forum recently held at the Upper St. Clair High School. Carolyn joined representatives from all of the South Hills Area School District Association member high schools to share experiences and discuss issues. Congratulations to the five Bethel Park High School vocalists who were chosen to sing in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's All-State Chorus, which will perform in April at the PMEA State Conference in Erie. Representing Bethel Park High School in this event will be Adrian Slater, Natalia Encov... Encov...
Kova.
Thank you. Jeff McCain, Anthony Lucetti, Daniel Sater-Fronzac, and Garrett Hoffman. Two Bethel Park High School musicians have been selected to play in the PMEA's All-State Band, which will also perform at PMEA's State Conference in Erie next month. Congratulations to Joe Musser and Bruce Steele. Also performing in the PMEA All-State Music Ensemble will be Bethel Park High School musicians Emily Couser, Ethan Tabler, and Janelle Wu, who will perform in the All-State Orchestra. Congratulations to all of our All-State musicians and vocalists. The reputation of our high school orchestra and band goes beyond our local borders. Recently, high school orchestra director Stephanie Glover was contacted by Dr. Mark Laycock, professor of music and director of orchestras at... I'm drawing a blank. Yeah, thank you. Wichita State University, who asked if he could stop by and work with the orchestra members while he was in town for a music conference. Additionally, Mrs. Glover was contacted by Octavio Massacross, director of the Baldwin Wallace University Orchestra, who asked if he could bring the members of the Baldwin Wallace College Orchestra to Bethel Park for a performance, followed by some side-by-side work with members of our orchestra and symphonic band. Both gentlemen told Mrs. Glover that Bethel Park had an excellent reputation for developing musicians, and they wanted to share their expertise with our students. Our students were grateful for both of these outstanding learning opportunities. The Bethel Park High School Drama Club students were added again, creating and performing an updated version of their Feed the Need to Read program to the district's elementary schools to help kick off the school's accelerated reader programs and celebrate Read Across America Day. This year's program featured a variety of the students' favorite storybook characters, including The Cat in the Hat, Captain Underpants, Fly Guy, and Munch the Moose, to name a few, and Skit and Song. They do a great job inspiring the younger students to pick up a book and read. For the 17th consecutive year, the members of the Bethel Park High School Varsity Hockey Team spent a morning teaching 26 adaptive physical education students from Washington Elementary and Neil Armstrong Middle Schools how to ice skate. The hockey players and the students met at the Bethel Park YMCA for an hour of skating, followed by a lunch together. The adaptive physical education students were grateful for the experience, and they thanked the hockey players by making the banners that they could hang in the ring for the Penguin Cup playoffs. This event is coordinated by adaptive physical education teacher Linda Grainy, who would like to thank the YMCA for generously donating ice time and skates for the students. Our winter sports season recently concluded, and we would like to briefly touch on our teams and athletes' successes. Our varsity competitive cheerleaders won their first-ever state championship. As we heard earlier this evening, wrestler Nino Bonacorsi finished the season as the section and Whipple champion and a state runner-up. Hunter Kernan was also a section champion, and Jason Montgomery finished in seventh place at the state wrestling championships. Our girls' basketball team finished as the Whipple runners-up and qualified for state playoffs. Sadie Coda finished in 10th place at the Whipple Diving Championships, and 11 members of our boys' and girls' swimming teams qualified to compete in Whipple championships. The varsity ice hockey team qualified for the Penguin Cup playoffs, and the varsity inline hockey team won the PIRHL championship. Congratulations to all of our athletes on a successful winter sports season. Two teams of Independence Middle School students competed in the Fluid Power Challenge at the Carpenter's Training Center. The challenge asked the students to use engineering skills to build a hydraulic arm that could move the greatest number of cylinders in two minutes. The students also had to prepare a portfolio detailing their experience constructing the hydraulic arm. The team of Jane Baranak, Demetrius Petronius, Toby Rule, and John Trowd won the award for Best Teamwork. Congratulations to all of the participants. This year, 72 Bethel Park 3rd graders showed they got game by participating in the 5th Annual Bethel Park 3rd Grade Spelling Bee sponsored by the Rotary Club of Bethel Park. Winning this year's bee was Memorial 3rd Grader Andre Abescaren, who received a $350 Toys R Us gift card from the Rotary for his achievement. Two Franklin students earned $200 and $100 Toys R Us gift cards for finishing behind Andre. Bray Lynn Burke was this year's 2nd place finisher, and Kaylee Shannon finished in 3rd place. Congratulations to all of the spellers. Andre is now eligible to move on to the Rotary's District Spelling Bee, which will be held in Seven Springs in June. Lincoln students commemorated World Down Syndrome Day by wearing crazy socks to school. The crazy socks promoted awareness and tolerance of individuals who have any disability. This was the first year that Lincoln participated in this activity, and teachers incorporated activities such as drawing, reading a story, or watching a short video about disabilities to implement a culture of respect, tolerance, and acceptance. World Down Syndrome Day is commemorated every year on March 21st. Mrs. Clancy's 1st grade students at Franklin enjoyed a week of Dr. Seuss-themed STEAM activities. Activities included having the students make oobleck after reading Bartholomew and the Oobleck. After reading Green Eggs and Ham, the students were given a green egg made of a mystery ingredient, which was baking soda. The students used pipettes to add vinegar to the egg to observe a chemical reaction that created bubbles from carbon dioxide. A highlight of the week was when the students were provided with red cups and note cards and asked to build a hat after reading The Cat in the Hat. In addition to the STEAM activities, the students incorporated Dr. Seuss books throughout the week for a variety of language arts activities, such as reading, rhyming, and phonics practice. A group of Bethel Park High School students who are members of STAND, Standing Together Against Negativity and Discrimination, visited both Washington 1st grade classrooms to forge some new friendships. The high school students read books on diversity to the younger students and talked to them about friendship, kindness, and making good choices. They answered questions and discussed different situations that the students might experience on the bus, playground, and with friends, and how to handle them appropriately. Washington 1st grade teachers were impressed with the high school students, and they enjoyed seeing their students look up to the older students. They plan on making this visit an annual event. William Penn students were inspired to create solutions to real-world problems using little bits and other STEAM STEM learning activities. The unit was led by librarian Mrs. Popovic and began with the reading of the story, "What Do You Do With an Idea?" The story teaches students that everything begins with an idea, and that a single idea can grow into something much bigger. The students then used little bits, which are electronic color-coded bits that snap together to form different circuits to create items such as flashlights, robotic cars, or doorbells. This exercise empowered the students to explore through inventive activity, and they realized they had the power to become scientists, engineers, and problem solvers. Who knows? Maybe the next big idea will come out of the William Penn Library. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Doesn't look like anybody's here from student government. Do we have anybody from PTA/PTO council? Yes.
Hi, I'm Christy Klein, and I am with Neil Armstrong PTO, and I have the report for all of the schools this evening. I'm gonna start with Abraham Lincoln. Lincoln's new event, Family Bingo Fun Night, was on March 10 and was very successful as a fundraiser. Everyone had a great time, and a lot of great prizes were won by Lincoln students and their families. Upcoming events at Lincoln, the Spring Book Fair, April 19 through the 21st, and Lincoln's annual Science Fair and Art Expo will be on April 20. George Washington. George Washington's accelerated reading program has begun. This year, the students are asked to take a 10-book challenge by reading and passing AR. Lincoln's new event, Family Bingo Fun Night, was on March 10th and was very successful as a fundraiser. Everyone had a great time and a lot of great prizes were won by Lincoln students and their families. Upcoming events at Lincoln, the Spring Book Fair, April 19th through the 21st, and Lincoln's Annual Science Fair and Art Expo will be on April 20th. George Washington. George Washington's accelerated reading program has begun. This year, the students are asked to take a 10-book challenge by reading and passing AR quizzes on 10 AR books at or above the child's indicated book level. In addition, a completely optional component of the AR includes having students complete a reading bingo board at home. The We Run Club kicked off its sixth year two weeks ago. Students will train for the Kids Marathon by exercising, stretching, and running on Tuesdays through April. George Washington had his Chick-fil-A Spirit Night last night. Students wore orange and black to school on Monday to celebrate their school pride. On April 7th, George Washington will be holding a family game night at 7:00 p.m. On April 8th, they will be teaming up with Goodwill to donate items. Bring your items to 515 Clifton Road from 2:00 to 5:00. All are welcome. On April 21st, they will be hosting the Washington's Got Talent Night at IMS at 6:30 p.m. Memorial. On March 10th, Memorial had a successful turnout for their Family Bingo Nights. March 14th, they held a PTA meeting to discuss the end-of-the-year activities ahead. March 15th, they had their annual 4th grade spelling bee. March 27th began the Memorial Movers, which will help the students to prepare for the race in May. March 31st ends the month with Memorial's annual talent show, which the kids work so hard to impress the audience. April 7th is the Last Student Store, which continues to benefit their 4th grade activities. Memorial's Spring Book Fair begins the 10th through the 12th, giving the kids the chance to stock up for summer with Buy One Get One. May rounds out one of the biggest fundraisers, the Fun Fair, on May 19th. They have tons of great games and other activities for the whole family, ending the night with a variety of baskets up for grabs. June 2nd ends with the Field Day Event for Memorial students that the kids look forward to every year. It is filled with activities, games, and filled with activities and games that round out the end of the school year with a bang. William Penn. William Penn held its 9th annual calendar party. Over 200 guests attended and they were able to raise over $8,000 for their school. The Spring Book Fair was held this month and was a big success. The kids enjoyed looking through all of the items and picking their own books. The success of the book fair helps their library get new titles to add to its collection. The children celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday by dressing up as their favorite Dr. Seuss character or by wearing red, white, and blue. The teachers joined in the fun and dressed in matching t-shirts. Everyone got to enjoy and play a play of well-loved stories presented by Bethel Park High School Drama Club. The Last Movie Night of the Year was held on March 17th. The students and their families enjoyed watching The Secret Life of Pets. And Penn is also welcoming back the Penn Pacers, as they are also training for the Kids of Steel Marathon in May. And last is Neil Armstrong. Neil Armstrong just finished up their Battle of the Books, which was very large this year, as well as our book fair and Sarah's Chocolate fundraisers. They were all a success. We also hosted a Parents Technology Night last Tuesday. This was presented by Shape the Sky and it went over with parents, the new dangers with kids, and technology today. With the growing problems seen in the schools with social media, we hope that this program helps educate parents on how to try to keep their children safe. Many of our teams are taking their field trips for the year. Our entire 6th grade class will be attending a Washington Wild Things Game on May 5th to support the chorus in singing the National Anthem. We are currently working towards our 5th and 6th grade Fun Days and our teacher appreciation. And finally, our Last Bingo of the Year will be held in the Nams Cafeteria on April 28th and that is open to anyone that would like to attend.
Thank you. Solicitors' Report?
Nothing other than what we discuss in the executive session.
Then we have no committees that met. Public comments on agenda items this evening? Any public comments on agenda items?
Hi, Sandy Blackmore, 3540 Valley Drive. I'm just wondering if it's a typo. Under the Personnel Committee, Professional, Temporary, Long-Term Sub, Meredith Hazen is being paid $48,000 to work three days. Is that just a typo? Number 5, Part A, then number 2, March 14th through March 17th, 2017?
I think it's effective March 14th through March 17th prorated on that salary. That would be the salary.
So just for the three days? Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments on agenda items? Then we'll move into business items, Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are two items this evening under curriculum. Would any like any held out? Hearing none, I move under Curriculum, the approval of curriculum. And number 2, the National Forensics League Tournament Competition in Louisville, Kentucky, May 25th to the 30th, 2017.
Item 1 and 2 under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on either of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry 8 to 0. Personnel Committee, Mr. Amadis, will you take the Personnel Committee for me this evening, please?
Yes, I will. We have seven items under the Personnel Committee. Would anybody want to these held out?
Number 6, please.
Number 6, any other? Hearing none, I move items 1 through 5 and number 7. Number 1 being the Memorandum of Understanding, Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Number 2, the Approval of Extra-Duty Responsibility Program. Number 3, Acceptance of Resignation, under that would be A Administration, B Professional, C Classified. Number 4 would be the Approval of Leave of Absence, under that would be number A Professional. Number 5 would be the Appointment of Personnel, under that number A Temporary Long-Term Substitutes. Number B, Letter B Alternative Education Program, 2016-17 School Year Professional. And then we move down to number 7, Approval of the Temporary Special Education Paraprofessional Positions.
Second. Items 1 through 5 and 7 under Personnel Committee have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Christensen. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry 8 to 0. Mr. Amadis.
I move number 6, Approval of Staffing Changes.
Second.
Item 6 under Personnel Committee has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Christensen. Any questions or comments on this item?
I wasn't here last week, so I apologize if this was talked about last week, but could somebody explain the changing from one full-time nurse position to point 8 of a nurse position? What's the logic behind it and how much do we save by saving a point 2 position? I just don't get it.
We had someone resign, I believe that was part of the closing of one position.
Yeah, so what happened there is you had somebody resign, so you accept the resignation and you close that position as a whole. Then you evaluate staffing to see what you do need and at this given point, we need point 8 of the employee, not the full 1, to maintain the schedule.
So how much time difference is point 8 in 1? Like an hour?
I would say.
Less than an hour, like 45 minutes?
I would say it would be...
I mean, I've just heard parents talk about the need for nurses and they're afraid because we don't have enough nurses and point 2 doesn't make sense.
Ms. Sutton, do you know the exact specific on the hours? As you looked at the schedule?
All that means is out of 1.0 to 5, it would be point 8 means 4 days. So point 2 would be the 5th day. And another nurse is there at that 5th day.
Is that, is point 8 still full-time or is it part-time or?
Part-time.
Any other questions on this item?
I do have a comment. I mean, when you look at it on a couple hours per week basis, it might not make sense, but that represents 20% of a year's salary. So it is a significant amount of money.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That item carries 7 to 1. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There is one item under Facility and Services Committee this evening. It's the approval of the construction documents for the high school entrance sign. Porter School Director approves the administration's recommendation to approve Aziz's guide to proceed with the construction documents phase of the high school entrance sign for the amount not to exceed $2,800.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Aziz's design was previously authorized, completed design municipal approval phase. We now need to authorize him to proceed with construction documents.
Second.
We're actually going to get to do this. Any discussion of this item?
This has been years coming. Oh, one other thing we should mention, this is being done with money that was donated to the school district, not with taxpayer funds.
And for the specific capital improvement purpose, right?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That means we want to see that sign up for the start of the next school year, right? Finance Committee, and back to you, Mr. Amadis.
Back to me. We have 12 items under the Finance Committee this month. Would anybody want any of these held out for further discussion? Hearing none, I move items 1 through 12. Number 1 being March 2017 salaries and bills. Number 2 being the February 2017 financial report. Number 3, budgetary transfers. Number 4, approval of the Act 32 voting delegates. Number 5, approval to participate in the Winston, Pennsylvania Electric Consortium Extension. Number 6, the Allegheny Intermediary Unit Program of Services Budget. Number 7, awarding of transportation equipment. Number 8, adoption of Allegheny Intermediary Unit Resolution. Number 9, approval of the purchase of information technology equipment. Number 10, purchase of school messenger notification services. Number 11, refuse and recycle contract. Number 12, items declared unused and nothing necessary.
Second.
Items 1 through 12 under Finance have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry 8 to 0. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
Okay, we have two items under the Policy Committee. Would anybody like anything withheld? Okay, seeing none, number 1 is the final reading of Policy 255 Educational Stability for Children in Foster Care. And number 3 is Policy Revisions, the final reading, 251 homeless students, and number 915 student booster organizations. And we should, I move that we approve 1 and yeah. I move we approve Resolutions 1 and 2 under the Policy Committee.
Second.
Items 1 and 2 under Policy Committee have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on either of these? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry 8 to 0. Mr. Means, will you continue with Other for me this evening?
Under Other, we have 2 items. Number 1 is a student agreement and number 2 is a change of the May 2017 Board Meeting Date. And number 1 is not for discussion, so would anybody like to discuss item number 2?
Well, let's move it first.
Okay, I move that items number 1 and number 2 be approved. Number 1, student agreements, and 2, change of the May 2017 Board Meeting Date. And that is the school board, School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to combine the Tuesday, May 16th, 2017 Committee Board Meeting with the regular Board Meeting on May 23rd, 2017, beginning at 8 o'clock. The date change will be posted at the Administration Building and will be advertised in the newspaper at the appropriate time.
Second.
Items 1 and 2 under Other have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on these items?
I guess we might want to point out why.
I was just going to bring, or if you want to, yeah. Just that the committee meeting falls on the General Election Day, so it was brought to our attention that we would not have a quorum of board members present to hold a meeting on Election Day. So that meeting is going to be combined as we do in November and I guess maybe December, a couple other times when we combine committee and voting meeting days. Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry 8 to 0. Public comments on anything you wish to address the Board on this evening? You have 2 minutes at the microphone. Name and address, please. No one talking tonight? Okay. I'll move into Board Comments. I don't remember which end on that. Mrs. Dobis, we'll start with you since you had a little vacation.
Apologies for not being here last week. I just want to comment on the amazing diversity of awards that our students receive and that we hear about every month. Particularly, I think, because so many of them show that our students are not just academically adept, but they are so good at the arts and languages and music and steel center activities. I just, it just thrills me beyond words. That's all I have to say.
I agree.
Oh, and ceramics, making bowls for the I'm sorry, I just needed to add that.
I agree, I agree. Mr. Means?
I had the pleasure of attending a girls' lacrosse game the other day against Taylor Alderdice. And during the course of the game, one of the parents from Taylor Alderdice came up and they were explaining that the girls were struggling because there were a lot of new ones and they didn't have the proper practice facilities. And the game was rather one-sided, but what made my day was the lady from Taylor Alderdice said that our girls were extremely courteous and helpful. And I learned after the game that the goalie didn't have a goalie net and somebody from our team actually supplied it to them. So that's the type of sportsmanship that really made my heart glad and it's better than a dozen wins, to tell you the truth.
Absolutely. Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I too enjoyed the staff report. That's my favorite part of the meeting. I say that every month and I mean it. And also, I wanted to say something about the students who were part of Shrek. What a performance. To sit there in one seat and think of what it took to pull it off, talk about teamwork and the costumes and everything involved and the children learning all their lines and so on. You forgot that you were with kids. It was a professional performance and kudos to all involved. Thank you.
I agree. That was my comment for the evening, so you've not heard. Mr. Spicuzza?
There's already nothing left to say. I really go back for those cases. But one thing that I I concur with all the other statements that were made. I think it's a wonderful thing to see and hear and learn. But I think the thing that got me tonight was the PTA/PTSO, whatever reported is, whenever I'm hearing you say, "This is our last this, this is our last that, this school year." Where did it go? What, it doesn't always seem quick and tidy to get to this point. So congratulations to everyone.
Absolutely. Spring is here, too, they say. Mr. Workmeister?
Like Russ and everybody was saying here, it's sort of tough to be last, but I will reiterate a few things because it definitely deserves it. First, congratulations to all the boards and students and arts and technology, everything, all that's important. It's the future of America and starting here in Bethel Park, so this is what's important. And Nino, they're going to Pitt, that's my all motto. I wanted to congratulate him for picking the best school there. And then the German club, I'm maybe in German, I was glad to see all the first-place winners, so that was good. But the Shrek play, that, we, my wife and I went to that a couple weeks ago and we were floored. It was the best play we've seen ever, so kudos to everybody involved and to Bethel Park for supporting it and everything else. And the last thing I'd like to say is, we were talking about the Wonders Program and the letter people, just to let people know that the Board, a lot of us are going to be attending some classes to see firsthand and we're taking it seriously. We've got letters from people telling us one way or the other and it's going to be a serious effort, at least I know on my part, and we'll treat it seriously to decide, well, you know, how we go on that. how we go on that. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen.
Yeah, I, like everybody said, being at the end is hard, but I just wanted to highlight one of the examples in the awards of, with the DECA Club. I know Connie's a fan of them also because they do a lot of work for the community. It's not just about achieving a personal award, but it's, they do a tremendous amount of work with the community. My wife is one of the instructors for this and so I know a lot about what's going on. And there's 35 students going to the national competition because they won an award at the state level, so they performed very well this year. But many of them provided very good benefits and a lot of insight to the community leaders around here. And I can speak personally about my daughter's project because I understand it, I know what they did. But they helped the YMCA put together a plan for a membership drive. And as a part of that, they identified the Bethel Park High School students as a target market, you know, to put together a campaign to try to draw them in and promote the offerings of the YMCA, all the different values of YMCA. And one of the activities they did was a survey. And through the survey, they were actually able to provide lots of insight around what were the interests of what students would be interested in participating in, but also how to contact them. And this was really interesting. Of course, YMCA, myself, also thought that Facebook, social media would be a great way to do that, but it turns out, that's old people's social media, okay? So, if you want to connect with high school students, it's more like Snapchat and those kinds of tools. So, the YMCA was really impressed with that. In fact, my daughter and her partner presented to the YMCA Executive Board and, you know, gave the same presentation. But the whole team, these 35 teams that participate are full of examples like that where they worked with local business interests and provided that kind of insight to other community functions here also. So, it's a fantastic organization that really teaches a lot of great skills about how to market, how to sell, and whether you're going to go into marketing or sales, it doesn't matter. Those are skills that everybody needs to have at some point in their life, so it's a very good program.
Great, thank you, Mr. Amadis.
I have no further comments.
Well, I'm the one who always gets to go absolutely last, so then I, most of all the comments have gone.
I think you should just choose to go first next time.
I guess I should.
And then you should let, go out, then Ron should go and then Russ should go. We should go last.
I always let everybody go first and I... But I just wanted to comment on the fact that we, through the years, have adapted to begin our meeting with our good news report. We tasked Vicki with, you know, kind of going out and collecting the good news from all of our buildings and in differing ways. It doesn't have to necessarily be a sports or be a win, it's something different, maybe they're doing in the buildings. But we just feel as a Board, and I think everyone has kind of reiterated that, that, you know, it's just, it's just great to start out with our good news to begin a meeting. And the other part of it is, we're trying to decide who do we bring in to commemorate. We could bring every single one of our students in for one thing or another, so sometimes that's a little tough call as far as, you know, we do on certain meetings, bring in certain students and/or groups or administrators, whatever. But again, we just like to start with good news. Another thing that was added during my tenure on the Board was the PTA/PTO Council. I used to be president of that organization back in the day and I saw all the things that were being done. And many of the things are being done that we could not, as a district, offer our students if we did not have those folks at PTAs and PTOs and PTSOs in our school building, raising those funds. $8,000, oh my gosh, that's fantastic, you know, doing all these great extra things for our students. And we, as a Board, felt, you know, the public needs to hear that, you know, we, as a Board, need to hear that, but in general, that we wanted to include it so that it's being taped and it's being shown and people in our community can know that we have a lot of parents and a lot of volunteers out there who are doing extra, extra special things for our students and bringing things to our students that we otherwise couldn't provide them. So, we, again, our hearts go out to you. And speaking of our hearts, you know, when we, as Board members, you know, are tasked to make decisions, of course, we do and have to do what is legally obligated in making decisions. But I feel that this Board also uses their heart and does what morally is obligated to do and I believe that that's how we make decisions when we, you hear of us passing motions and making decisions that we're, yes, we're bound legally under certain aspects, but I think that we're also bound morally as members of this community, as parents and grandparents ourselves, to provide for all of our students in the best way that we can. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.